It is now six thirty. I would like to call this meeting, call the meeting to order. This is the Florisville City Council's special meeting set for June 20th, 2017. If you would please rise for the invitation, Pastor John Comrade.
Let us pray. Lord God, we read in the book of Psalms, "Happier those who delight in the law of the Lord." We live in a city with laws and we give you thanks for those who enforce and abide by those laws. We give you thanks for our law enforcement officers who keep our city's streets safe. We give you thanks for their dedication and commitment even to the extent of being willing to put their lives at risk for the sake of our community. We also lift up before you our elected officials. We pray that their decisions may be made with integrity, serving the greatest good. Grant them the strength to be kind and merciful when they need to be kind and merciful. Grant them the strength to do the right thing even if it is not popular. And for those who live within this community, may there be a spirit of harmony, that we might be instruments of peace. Grant that we might seek to understand as well as to be understood. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is discord, let there be union. Where there is error, let there be truth. And where there is darkness, let there be light. In Jesus' name.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance on the Texas flag.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We do have a forum this evening. In attendance, Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Gloria Cantu, myself, Maynard Sissy Gonzales Dipple, Councilman Jacob Silva, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez. Thank you. It is now time for our citizens' comments. Again, before citizens' comments, I would like to remind folks, if you would, to please turn your cellphones off or turn your rears off, please. During citizens' comments, you are given the opportunity to come up to the podium if you would state your name. You have five minutes to tell us your issues or tell us your feelings. So thank you very much, and I'll just take the first one.
Mayor, Council, I'm Fred Gonzalez, Florisville. As a citizen, I'm concerned on how dismissive the council appears to be to requirements of the Open Meetings Act and the City Charter, which for us is equivalent to stay loud. It seems the council believes it can go into secret sessions simply because you want to consult with attorney, without regard to specific legal limitations in Section 551.071. On the charter side, the council's dealings with the police matters appear to be a clear violation of Section 3.08, which states, "The council and its members shall deal with the administrative services solely through the city manager." Yet all the actions initiated and taken, i.e. hiring of consultant and dedicated attorney staff, have been by the mayor slash council. We have yet to see the city manager stamp on any of these. Now, here we are, CNAs indicating some forthcoming personnel firings, one where the city manager is a hiring slash firing authority, and two where the police chief is a hiring slash firing authority. But all are placed there by the council. However, the most significant violation of the charter may yet be to come: the firing of the police chief. Based on all applicable provisions in the charter, you can't get from here to there without violating it. Section 4.02 addresses the removal of the chief. It states, and I'm quoting, "He may be removed from office by the city manager with the majority approval of the entire city council." Now, what is the entire council? According to Section 3.01, "The legislative and governing body of the city shall consist of a mayor and five council members, and shall be known as the Council of the City of Florisville." Thus, to remove the chief requires a majority of the six-member council, i.e. four voting in favor. However, nothing here or anywhere in the charter changes the provision on the mayor voting only in case of a tie. Section 3.01B still applies. Section 3.10B reads, and here I'm quoting again, "The mayor should be entitled to vote on all matters, all matters, under consideration by the council, only to break a tie." There are no exceptions to this limitation. Bottom line, from best indications on where each of you stand, you can't get necessary four pro votes. Allowing the mayor to vote on this is a clear violation of the charter. So why subject the city to all this destruction, divisiveness, and cost? Let's do the constructive thing. Take an objective look at the evaluation results and work with, not against, the police department to fix whatever may be wrong. Listen to them do. I was here when Dr. Taylor reported his findings, and he spoke loud and clear and at times shouted. And while his findings can be of use, I find that he left much to be desired. He was defensive for one thing. He was biased when he talked about perfectionists. This faction was great. This one didn't know what they were doing. Fuzzled, it appeared to be conceived. If you read the last part of the report, it says, "Let the new chief, already a new chief, use this as a guide." Most important, when does a PD, the police department, get to present their case? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzales.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the Florisville City Council. My name is Robert Leonard. I am the Assistant General Counsel for the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas, commonly referred to as CLEEP. We represent the vast majority of the Florisville police officers, including the Chief of Police, the Assistant Chief of Police, and the Lieutenant. I'm here tonight to speak of the grave concerns that I have regarding the report that was delivered by the consultant, Dr. Robert Taylor. When Dr. Taylor first got up to make his presentation, I guess the first ten minutes or so was basically spent grandizing on himself, basically trying to convince everybody how smart and how wonderful he was. I personally believe that he was setting the table so that you would be blinded by his so-called brilliance and basically just accept, as written, the report that he provided you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I've seen the report. I've gone through it. I've read it. And it's one of the biggest pieces of drivel I've ever read in my career as an attorney. Dr. Taylor goes on and on about his academic success and how he's written this or written that and spoken on this. Yet when you read his report, I've read reports rather written by 12th grade high school students that are better written. But you have a man who doesn't support any of his assertions with any known scientific facts regarding how he gathered this information. If you really read it, you find that it's filled with contradictions. It doesn't make sense half the time. On one hand, he criticizes the people he's talking about. On the other hand, he praises them. The bottom line is that Dr. Taylor's report, to be quite honest with you, isn't fit to wind the bottom of a birdcage. Dr. Taylor, being a PhD, understands the importance of backing up your assertions with provable scientific methodologies, the things that are required to make your document hold up under the worst scrutiny possible. He claims that his documents was peer-reviewed by his colleague that was unable to ever make it to the city of Florisville. Well, I put to you, good folks, if Dr. Taylor couldn't provide or produce any of his, I guess, evidence, his scientific gatherings, or his methodologies for gathering that information, to you, the people who are paying him, what did he give to his colleague to peer review? If he gave him just a report, how is his colleague supposed to fact-check it against anything that's in it? Did anybody here fact-check what Dr. Taylor wrote in that report? Because it's filled with inconsistencies and accuracies, some parts of it are just flat-out wrong. I'm not prepared to call Dr. Taylor a liar. I don't know him that well. But I will tell you that he's wrong, dead wrong, on several things. He's dead wrong on a number of facts. He's dead wrong on his conclusions. He's dead wrong on some aspects of the law. But more importantly, he's dead wrong when he talks about removing the chief, the assistant chief, and the lieutenant. These people have served his community faithfully for a long, long time. All of a sudden, we get new council, new mayor, and the first thing out of everybody's mouth is, "Well, this is not a witch hunt." I'm concerned when somebody starts off the whole process by putting out front that, "This is not a witch hunt. We're not after anybody." That's a red flag, big time. That report is absolutely baseless if you're going to use it for grounds to remove the chief, the assistant chief, or the lieutenant. Again, the methodologies used by Dr. Taylor were lacking, severely lacking. They had absolutely no basis in fact. He sat down with some people for a couple of hours over a cup of coffee. They bellyached about what they didn't like. And he put it down on paper. And what's really, really tragic about all of this is that you people paid for it with taxpayer dollars, $37,500 of them. I'm glad that there are police officers in the room because we need to do a crime report because you got robbed.
My name is Dwight Tiller. I'm the Director of Field Services with the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas. Y'all have a handout and some information I wanted to bring to your attention amongst some other issues. First of all, I have actually worked with cities and associations when they wanted to do an objective analysis of their police department and their needs. I've seen surveys done using Likert scale questions, where you have a written report in hand from a consultant, from the participants in the police department, that is answered on a number scale, and has a written area at the end for any other concerns. It's all done anonymously. There's no hearsay done. And this has been done by professors at Midwestern State University, Professor Donna Ledgerwood at University of North Texas Human Resource Department, the International City Managers Association did one in Cedar Park, the Public Safety Division. I've never seen a report that was gathered by verbal communication between officers and then that was condensed into some sort of report, as was pointed out last council meeting by Councilwoman Cantu, was hearsay. So I want to point out a few things in addition that outside. I've never seen anything like this. And I've been on staff with CLEEP over 25 years. I was a police officer for 17 years prior to that. My last police department was a rural police department of 11,000 people in it. I know the challenges that rural police departments can have, especially properly funding in certain aspects of police operations. So I personally think he tried to, Professor Taylor tried to compare the city of Midlothian. This is all information. It's a fact sheet in front of you. City of Midlothian is considered a suburb. It's located in a county concerned by the U.S. Census Bureau's mostly urban. 23,689 people was the 2016 estimated census, or Florisville, 2016 estimated census, 7,495. The county designated as mostly rural. The city of Midlothian is over three times the size of the city of Florisville. I also want to point out there's a lot of demographics have to be taken into account, whatever you go into and you do a survey of the police. Or you have to do an objective survey for a base to start from. And one of the demographics the Census Bureau showed was that the city of Midlothian only has 14% Hispanic population. Florisville has 59. And then we got to check, and all this public information is available. Mr. John Q. Public, anybody can go in and find this information. The Secretary of State, in his proposal, he had said that his contact, and actually it was a DBA, some name signature filed for Magellan Research Corporation, had been in business since over 40 years. Also, in his bio-information, he's about 66 years old, based on his date of birth that was given. So over 40 years, I guess he's been in this company since he was 25, 26, 24 years of age. But the truth is, when you check it, the Secretary of State, it's not over 40 years. It's a little over 29 years. Why the exaggeration? And why, if this is an exaggeration, would you rely on hearsay? The information that was gathered and then placed in some sort of report, when there is no Likert scale question as every other survey I've seen done by consultants or police departments. Also, we found where the National Institute for Prevention of Violence, that he was their registered agent and the director of it. However, in his address was at his former residence he used to live in, that it forfeits its legal existence due to tax forfeiture in 2015.
Thank you. Your five minutes are up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, guests. Mayor, Council, I had a very long list. I went through Dr. Taylor's report, his final report. I went through, I've taken days to go through it. I went through it. And I've made a list, about 13 or 14 pages, of absolute blatant contradictions. Like Mr. Leonard said, I'm not prepared either to call them a liar, but there are some blatant contradictions. And I was going to try to go through all those this evening, but been advised to tone it down a little bit. But at the end of the day, when you go into executive session, when you come back out and you take whatever action it is that you determine to take, the big topic up there is the elimination of Chief Herrera, myself, and Lieutenant Evans. Dr. Taylor's report has indicated no cause. He's giving you no factual information. But the one thing that resonates with me very clearly, and this is where I'm going to disagree with my counsel, at one point. Dr. Taylor did, in fact, give you two sources in his report that were validated factual research. He gave you some demographic data on the city of Florisville, and he also gave you a passage from the FBI's uniform crime reports, where he says in this passage that less than 10% of the crimes in Florisville are Tier 1 crimes. Tier 1 crimes by FBI classification are your, you know, your serious violent crimes, murder, rape, robbery, those crimes of that type of nature. At one point in Dr. Taylor's report, and this is a contradiction, but I want to point this out because I think it's relevant in case you didn't see it. At one point in his report, he says that less than 10% of felony cases, I'm sorry, less than 10% of the cases, the felony cases filed with the district attorney are from the city of Florisville. And he also points out that that's kind of, that's an exceptionally low number because Florisville is the largest concentration of, concentration, population concentration, that's what I'm trying to say, of her district. But he contradicts himself two different times there. On page two, and I quote, he starts off by saying, "Florisville, unlike any other city across Texas or across the nation, does not have a crime problem." That's number one. Number two, he says on page seven, when he's going through the FBI crime data, that the crime in Florisville is exceptionally low. I'm going to close it with this. If Dr. Taylor, the only fact-based research, is based on uniform crime reports, and by his own admission twice within his report, if he's saying, "We have no crime problem," you know, he talks about Chief Herrera, he talks about me, he talks about Chief didn't know what Sarah was, and some of these other community policing acrobats. But at the end of the day, isn't a police department, isn't our main function to protect the citizens? Florisville has a crime rate that is exceptionally, exceptionally low by all standards. And I think instead of chastising the administration, I think we should be congratulating not only Chief Herrera, but all of the staff of the police department. Thank you all.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and guests. My name is Joanne Uhaz, and I certainly appreciate law enforcement. They're very important, and it's important not just for the residents of Florisville, but also for those of us that do business here. Spend 75% of our time here, work here, go to the doctor, go to the store. It's important. I can tell you in my many times with petition signing, going door to door, there were numerous occasions we were told not to go to that house. And we're, "Why shouldn't we go to that house?" Because that's a drug house. Well, why are they still operating? They get arrested one day and they're released the next. And these people are scared to death. Okay, I have no, I have no dog in this fight. I don't know the chief. I worked with him once when we did the balloon festival with traffic. I don't really know any of these officers. But it's important that you find the courage to do what's right, whether you choose to find ways to improve the police department, whether you find ways to replace whoever needs to be replaced. But you need to find the courage and do the right thing for all the citizens, not because you know somebody, somebody's your relative, somebody's your friend. That doesn't fly. You weren't hired to do that. You were hired to represent everybody. And Councilwoman Cantu, I was like in shock when I saw that you were on the agenda for discussion and possible action to establish a new committee comprised of five resident residents of the city of Florisville, with each council member selecting one member of the committee. The purpose is to evaluate and make recommendations regarding the police report. That's your job. That's not the residents' committee job. That's your job, all of your job. Yes, but, no, you may not. Also, there, I looked up Dr. Robert Taylor also, and there was a 35-page bio-information regarding his credentials. Thank God he convinced it when he did his presentation. If you'd like to look at it, I have printed 25 pages. I ran on a paper. So I think the city council, when they chose him, did it in good faith, that it would be done well and accurately. And to say that the police officers that he talked to, because they don't agree with some of the other police officers, and to call them names and to say it was just over coffee, is really disrespectful. Everybody's opinion, everybody's contribution is important. Thank you.
Evening, Council. My name is Raymond Moyn, and as a citizen here, I thank you for your time. I don't know what you guys faith this, but I'm a man of faith. And there's a story of a woman who was standing in front of the council that was trying to condemn her. The council saw a righteous person and tried to get that righteous person on the side of their costs to try to condemn that person. Jesus, who is without sin, told the council that Him, who is without sin, cast the first stone. The council, in their shame, walked away. I tell you this story because it's similar to what's happening today, what I feel is happening today. I plead with the council to do the right thing. I'm not a righteous man like Jesus, but I ask the council to stop stoning the police department and do the righteous thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, staff, and guests. My name is Juan Ortiz, and I'm from Florisville. This council here did not plan, did not have the budget, no expenditures for this consultant. This council went and made a state, a state that cost about $10,000 to each council member. And at the end of the day, this council did not plan, and there wasn't a budget. But guess what? This council, the ones that voted for this consultant, at the end of the day, called mom and dad, the taxpayers, and said, "Mom, Dad, we ain't got no money. What are we going to do?" I'm sorry, but this was not budgeted, and it was poorly planned, and the leadership was not there, and it's not there. I'll say this. This here is a good example of what the last people did, a recall. And I know that there's some people like this. Brother just came and said, "There's some good people here." And I'm looking at that they would do the right call. They will. There's some good people in the council. But there's some that will follow. They're just new. They're just rookies. Don't be a follower. Lead. If it's in your heart to terminate these three officers, do it. If not, don't be playing games here. Y'all are here to make a good call, a righteous call. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm not sure if everybody up here knows me, but my name is Bernadette Herrera, and I am proud to say I'm the wife of Chief Lorenzo Herrera. I have known Lorenzo for over 30 years. He is honest, hard-working person that I know. Robert Taylor should be ashamed of his report. There is neither truth nor ethical value to his report. His report is biased and a defamation of character towards the chief of police, assistant lieutenant, and other officers named in his report in a negative manner. In a supervisory position, you will always have unhappy people. If anybody here has ever been a supervisor, you would know that. All decisions that the chief has made have been to improve and move the police department forward. Chief Herrera has dedicated his whole career to the city of Florisville. For over, for about 24 years of employment, he has offered termination due to an unnecessary report. If the city wanted a true report, council should have recommended the Texas Commission of Law Enforcement, TCO, to come in and do an audit, which would have been at no cost to the city. The question is, you know, why did the city do this? They could come in from somebody that cannot be directed on how to do this report for their outcome. We, you have used the taxpayers' money in the amount of $37,500 or more, when you could have gotten this for free from somebody who would not be biased. But why spend the money? What kind of outcome did you want? Did you get the outcome we wanted? Did you get the outcome you wanted? When I first came up here, when I was here at the meeting, or when they decided to hire Robert, Nick Neeson said, "We are not here to get anybody terminated or fired. We are here to get improvements and move forward." So that's in the minutes, Nick Neeson. You know, it makes others wonder what, who...